I call to order the meeting of the planning board of the township of Morris for April 7th, the regular meeting, April 7th, 2025. The legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying same will be executed. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sonia, could you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 This lady, here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can move right on. Our first order of business, we have one application here for public hearing. You want to introduce that, boys?
This is PBO 3-25 Morris Town Motors Inc. on the Mendez Spike Town variance waiver. Lot 10104, lot 67, 169 Ridge Dale Avenue in the I-21 zone. Applicants propose to pave an existing compacted gravel mill parking area and may install a sidewalk and curb which would connect with the previously approved stairwell to the Subaru Service Center on Lot 13. Lighting fixtures, underground electrical lines, and underground stormwater management facility will also be installed.
Thank you. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified mail on March 26th, published on March 27th, both at least 10 days prior to this evening. So the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application this evening. And I'm happy to swear in the witnesses when appropriate after applicant's counsel provides his oath.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals. Peter Wolfson of the firm of Day Pittney, here on behalf of the applicant. May I be seated?
Yes, please.
Thanks very much. So the property is shown as lots 6 and 7, block 10104, on your tax map with the street address of 169 171 Ridge Dale Avenue. Contains approximately 265,080 square feet located in the I-21 industrial zone where car dealerships are a permitted use. As you heard in Sonia's comments, the property currently contains a Toyota car dealership, a car wash for use by the car dealership only, a parking lot, and related site improvements. Those improvements were the subject of previous approvals from this board, including most recently pursuant to your resolution PB 1207, adopted on October 20, 2014. As part of the initial approvals for the property, when it was first developed in 2011, 2012, the applicant received a variance to permit up to 84.5% impervious coverage on the property. As part of the amended approval in 2014, the applicant then reduced the impervious coverage on the property to 79.4%, which continues to be the existing coverage amount today. The applicant now seeks amended approval to reconfigure a portion of the parking lot and walkways and to add site lighting. Specifically, the applicant seeks to pave an existing gravel portion of the parking lot, install a sidewalk and curb which will connect to the previously approved stairwell connecting the property to the adjacent Subaru Service Center located on adjacent Lot 13, the lighting fixtures, underground electrical lines, and underground stormwater management facilities. The applicant is proposing a total of 34,159 square feet of disturbance. The remainder of the site will remain unchanged. There's one variance in connection with the application before you, and that has to do with impervious coverage on the site. As I said, it's currently 79.4. 75% is permitted under the ordinance. We seek permission to go to 82.9 from 79.4. It's interesting to note that the previous variance granted for this property permitted up to, at that point, a proposal that would have had 84.5% impervious coverage or more than we seek tonight. In addition to that single variance, we seek two design waivers from your ordinance. There's a requirement that the parking areas be suitably landscaped, and the applicant does not propose any landscaping in conjunction with the proposal. There currently is the condition on site, there is no landscaping. The second requires parking stalls, driveways, and aisles to be marked. And again, the applicant does not propose to change the current configuration, which is unmarked. It's important to note that in conjunction with this parking field that's proposed to be paved, that all parking is done by employees. There are no customers that park cars there, so it's strictly for storage by the dealership. The application was deemed complete pursuant to correspondence dated March 12, 2025. In addition to that completeness memorandum, we're also in receipt of a memorandum of review from the Environmental Commission dated March 31, 2025. I have two witnesses with me tonight. John Brower, who's a principal, the applicant is here if there are any questions of him. But I have two witnesses, John Hanson, who's both a professional engineer and a professional planner. John has a long history of the development of this site, and he'll provide a little background on that, as well as discuss existing conditions. He also is a planner and will talk in support of the single variance and the two waivers. And then James Kaiser is our project engineer, and he'll discuss the modifications proposed from an engineering perspective. So if there are no questions of me, I would call my first witness.
Mr. Warner, you want to swear?
I'll swear them both in as well. The board's professionals, our engineer, Mr. Hanson, our planner, Ms. Lanning, if you will, raise your right hand. All of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you all. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Want to proceed?
Okay, we'll call John Hanson first.
Is this the best spot for the presentation, Jorge? Am I going to be able to see it here, or would you like me to send it up somewhere else?
It's a little far.
Would that be better than that one? Or if I write it down?
Yeah, we don't have any public, so.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you'd want to bring it up in the key.
I don't think so. I'd probably do the old-fashioned way here. It's gonna be easier, but. We could stay here and talk.
Sonia, is anybody, do we know, is anybody watching at home? Okay.
Participants, zero.
Okay.
It says right on the screen, right there on the screen. Yeah, see, the far left on the bottom, in the middle, the furthest icon. Participants, is there a zero or?
Two.
Two? Yeah.
Well, then, shouldn't the board be in view of a camera? Yeah. They probably can. Okay, that's good. That's what I thought. Okay, good. Then this is, then this is, then this is much better.
Our IT person is stacking it for the Nielsen rating. We'll boost it up there.
Hey, John, can you please provide us with brief background of your educational, professional background, including licenseure in the areas of planning and engineering?
Absolutely. So just for the record, it's John Hanson, last name's H-A-N-S-E-N. So I've got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech back in 1992. I've been doing this type of work since then. Been before this board a number of times over the last 20 to 25 years, testified in thousands of cases there in that time. And I've been intimately involved with the Brower family properties for probably the last 20 years or so. Worked on the Toyota Morris Town property and mainly Subaru sites. I'm intimately familiar with these properties and the property. And my licenses are both in good standing. And that's both as to engineering and planning. Is it standing correct?
Any relation to Mr. Hanson? Okay.
We've known each other now for quite a while.
Then certainly we'll accept your credentials, and please proceed.
Thank you very much.
Oops.
Okay, so why don't we mark this, this is not part of the package, and mark this 81 with today's date. It's an aerial photo of the property and the surrounding area. It's entitled Proposed Site Condition Rendering, and it's dated March 31st of this year, prepared by my firm. So I thought this would be good to at least kind of lay out the property for the record, the surrounding features, and then we can get into just the existing conditions, and then my associate can talk about the proposed improvements. So what you see in the, in the middle of this is the subject project area. Ridge Dale Avenue would be along the bottom of the exhibit. East Hanover Avenue is on the left side, and so the north is really the bottom left-hand corner of the, of the page here. And so just to lay out the, the area of the surroundings, you have Subaru showroom in this location here, important to the front of the page. To the left of the page is, what you see is this aerial, is an older aerial, so it shows the storage units, the U-Lock storage units that are now the Subaru Service Center under construction. And by the way, that project's going very well. To the top of the page is the Keep Smart self-storage facility. And then to the right is the Toyota Morris Town, the service center, showroom building. And then to the bottom of the project site is the hardware store on Monte. So you can see, the, the area that we're talking about here is surrounded by Kirsch Commercial Development. It's kind of the last, well, the last piece that we really wanted to improve now that we've done all of this work around it, and the sites are really looking very well, functioning very well. The idea is to take, you know, this last piece, it's a gravel parking lot, to clean it up, make it a little safer, have a little more well-lit, so it can be a little more functional and safer. So the things, some things to note here, if you've been out to the property, you've seen that there's some, some grade around this area. Those slopes, although, and the slopes are regulated by your ordinance, they're all man-made, so there's no, you know, pristine steep slopes. There's no freshwater wetlands, there's no floodplains, there's no environmental constraints here. And as you look in this area too, one thing to note is that we really never had designed any significant landscaping back there. All the slopes are stable, there's all soil, vegetation growing out of them, but because it was out of the view, general public can really have an area that's only for customers, for employees, and really only to be used for that. We never really focused on doing much, much of that stuff back there. But it, but it does function well. Over the years too, we've, just to kind of set up, my associate will talk about the drains, but right now, this area kind of has one drain in the middle of it, and it collects from the gravel surface all into the one drain, and then it's piped out, we connect it through our Subaru system there, and it eventually goes out to East Hanover. That's important because over the years, you know, for all these properties that were developed many, many years ago, the water kind of flowed in different directions, and now it's really flowing the way it needs to flow, there's no impacts to neighboring properties, and it was by design. We eventually got to that point over all these years. And so you'll hear from my associate that we're finalizing paving and stuff that we're doing, and kind of the last piece in the front, what to really perfect the drainage and make this thing work well. Soil's out here, everybody probably knows you have the John Creamy site off the page that is right here, it's sandy gravel, concrete mixed area, so this whole area is very, very sandy soils. So they're very good for infiltration of stormwater, which we're going to propose to do here, and works very well with what we're set on, on the project. I think that's really probably a good spot for me to stop. I could certainly answer any questions on my testimony so far, and if there's no questions, I could turn it over to James.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What's the landscape requirement for receiving waiver from it?
The landscape requirement is basically, it's kind of broad, but it's parking areas to be suitably landscaped. And so I was going to testify to this, and I still will, but this is a vehicle storage lot, so whether it's really a parking lot per se, you know, is somewhat up to debate, I guess. But also, you know, my, my understanding of the landscape requirement was really so that you have parking areas where you have customers coming to make it more visually appealing and, you know, make it, make it work a little bit better from that standpoint.
So I, I get the idea that it's a car dealership, and trees are probably difficult, what trees could do to cars, but from the same perspective, none of that area has any vegetation.
Yeah.
There's no trees there at all, so would you be able to offer us some trees somewhere else on your properties to maybe pick up for the fact that there's not going to be any trees on the parking lot where, I agree with you, you don't need them and you don't want them? The fact that there's no trees at all, you know, look at, I'd say from a global look, is there a way to get some, some trees or some vegetation so we can get some oxygen, carbon dioxide?
I, I think we have a couple of places that if the board, that becomes a, a thing that the board really wants us to focus on, that we could look at a couple of areas here on the property to put some vegetation in, a couple of maybe party shrubs, and maybe, you know, something of that to add a little bit more landscaping back there. But the reason, the reason that we did is for all the reasons that you said, you know, it's just that when you are, when you have an area like that that you want to maintain and the public's not going to see it, generally, generally ask for it.
We'd certainly be able to work with your professionals to try to identify some spots to get some green.
Yeah.
I don't know the rest of the workfield, but I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off what you said, because I do think that that's an excellent stipulation. That area is, you know, not the trees, customers are going to see your trees, but to, to put trees someplace else on the property where it could be more useful as an exchange for all the, you know, for the variance, I think is something that the board probably could get behind.
The other option is, or the other possibility, or in addition to that, perhaps, we, I know the Environmental Commission's report, I mean, you have, in the plan, there's various turf grasses on those, those slopes. The one on the back, on the east side now, particularly is eroding quite a bit, but there's recent rain. I'm not sure the turf grass itself would be sufficient for that. So some, some of the, the native grasses and sedges and things in there and shrubs, I don't know if you'd really want to plant a tree on that steep slope, or, not quite as steep between the, that lot and the new dealership there, but that, but those both would be places where something more than just grass would be, would be helpful.
Here the board, and we can certainly work with professionals.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
I, I am a little ambivalent about requiring trees, but if you have some kind of ornamental shrubbery that's on our plant list or things like that, and then taking care of any potential erosion issues, I think would satisfy the, kind of the desire that I'm hearing here. A tree isn't necessarily the right solution, but having some kind of vegetation might be helpful.
Yes. Right now, there's no curbing along the back of that parking lot.
That's true.
Any excess water is going down the slope.
That's true.
They're proposing the curbing to catch the water.
Right.
So the erosion may be mitigated in part by this.
Right.
And some deep-rooted grasses or something like that may be the way to go.
Right.
It's, it's not a steep slope, it's a very steep slope, so it should have something deep-rooted like they use along 287 or, or 80 that maintains its, a good growth and good root, but it doesn't need to be maintained.
Right. Yes, you don't want to, yeah, right, it is steep. Yeah, right.
No. Can you just describe the topography here a little, in a little more detail? How strongly does that unpaved area slope? Does it slope toward, toward Hanover Avenue or?
No.
So let me formulate it out this way. So behind the hardware store, so I'm pointing to the, the east of the hardware store, this is the paint parking area of, that's the case into the car wash area. So this is, I would say, you know, for all intents and purposes, relatively gradual slope, it's not steep slope. As you get off of that and get into the gravel here, you know, it's a little bit more of a undulating slope, you know, and partly that's typical of gravel parking area, you get puddles and so forth, and you plow the snow and move the gravel. But then as you move towards Hanover Avenue, from this point here, it's steeply dropped off towards the proposed Subaru Service Center construction. So we've had this, you know, planted with typical grasses, and then we also have stabilized with the painting there that's under construction at the bottom of that slope.
My first question was about the unpaved parking lot, so are you saying that it's approximately level on average? But you described a drain that's sort of in the center or?
Yeah, so the water pitches to the northwest, this direction here. And there's a drain that's right, as you call it, in the northwestern, northeastern quadrant of this existing gravel parking area. So what we did here is, since you don't have, have any curb, we created a low spot, this was years ago, and put the drain in there, and so the water goes in there, and then it goes out, goes into the collection system there in Subaru. So it's, it works, but it's not a great situation, because under a typical engineering plan, what it likes to do is have a consistent grade across the parking lot, and then have the water collect along the curb. That way, you reduce icing in the parking lot, you reduce erosion during the parking lot, and that's on the post. So, you know, I think when this all comes together, it gets approved by the board, you know, we don't, it'll enhance the drainage and the safety and correct the erosion of this drainage.
And then how steep is the steep slope that's between that parking lot and the, and the new construction that's to the left?
Yeah, so, so to this slope here, this is about a 3 to 1, between a 2 to 1 and 3 to 1 slope here. That's relatively stable slope, and then you have a, a steep slope between the subject parking lot or vehicle storage lot and the Keep Smart.
Okay, where's the property line?
Oh, the property.
On, on, sorry, between you and the, and the storage area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Follow my cursor here, I'm pointing for the record, about halfway between the gray area of the existing gravel parking lot and the Keep Smart.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? I would ask for questions from the public, but we have no public. Yes, yeah, professionals, right.
Yes, will you be coming back to do your planning testimony after your colleague speaks? Yes. As the stormwater and other engineering, okay. And then I take it at that point, you all hit on the reports, or to extend, he doesn't hit on the reports. I guess it was Environmental Commission and really the planners' report, dark sky compliance was essentially one and only condition. That's on the environmentals as well. The college will testify as to the lighting. Okay, so we'll leave it for him then? Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
James, can you share your educational and professional background with us?
I graduated from, or I received my bachelor's. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to be a lot of hours. Okay. I received my bachelor of science from Jackson University in 2018, and I have, I have a...
Hello? Hello?
I received my bachelor of science from Jackson University in 2018. I am a professional engineer, or I am a licensed professional engineer in good standing, and I have six-plus years of experience working in, as a design engineer on site plans, subdivisions, land development, grading, drainage utilities, soil erosion, sediment control, and stormwater design.
And you're familiar with the site? You visited the site?
Yes, I visited the site, and I performed the, and I've been a project engineer on the site.
Have you? I may ask one quick one.
Yes.
Have you been accepted as an expert in finding land use for the state of New Jersey prior to this?
Yes, I've testified at Princeton Municipality.
That's my question also. Thank you. Thank you. And your licenses are in good standing?
Yep, and they are currently in good standing.
Okay, uh, thank you. You can proceed.
So the applicant is proposing to pave the existing gravel area, parking area in the rear of the subject property. A six-inch vertical concrete curb is proposed around the perimeter of the parking area, and a six-foot wide sidewalk is, is proposed to connect the landing of the previously approved staircase and the previously approved curb ramp. This will allow safe pedestrian access from the Subaru Service Center to the Subaru showroom. A steel guide rail is proposed around the, the perimeter for additional safety. Additional lighting is proposed in the parking areas. The proposed lighting fixtures are dark sock appliance and LEDs, and they are consistent with what is currently on the property. The proposed height and spacing of the light fixtures is also consistent with what is currently existing on the subject property. For the stormwater management, it has been designed as a minor stormwater development for the proposed increase of impervious coverage, and has been submitted for review to the township engineer. Minor grading is proposed in the parking areas to provide a consistent slope and to direct stormwater runoff along the curbs to the proposed inlet in the corner of the parking areas. The proposed inlet will direct the, will capture and direct the stormwater runoff into the underground infiltration basin. The proposed underground infiltration basin has been designed to discharge into the existing inlet, maintaining the existing drainage patterns on the site. And in connection with the proposed project, two design waivers and one variance is requested. Per 95-546A1, the parking areas are required to be suitably landscaped, and there's no landscaping proposed, therefore, a design waiver is requested. Per 95-546C, the parking stalls and drive aisles are to be marked, and no markings are proposed in the drive aisles or the parking areas. Therefore, a design waiver is requested for that as well. And per 95-32, a maximum lot coverage allowed is 75%. The existing lot coverage is 79.4%, and as a result of the improvements, the impervious lot coverage is 82.9%. Therefore, a variance is requested for that as well, and Mr. Hanson will provide further explanation on the design waivers and variances requested.
If I may, just again to confirm the proper we made of working with your professionals to try to identify some locations on site to add some shrubbery and other greenery?
And that is all I have for the engineering portion.
Mr. Robbs?
Just a quick question on, on the, on the lighting. Granted, you need, you know, lighting for all the times it's dark. Is the lighting on any part of the dealership or, or what's proposed going to be dimmed at all for the, for, you know, like after 10:00 PM or something like that?
Yes, I forget the exact time, but it will be dimmed for security purposes. I don't remember the exact timeline on it, but I have it on the.
I noticed these specified, these are smart lights.
Yeah.
That, well, that, they're easily controllable through an app, apparently, I guess. So.
I, I'm, I'm advised that obviously it's somewhat seasonal dependent, but nine o'clock is a, a safe time to assume that they would be dimmed.
Dimmed to what percent?
We'd have to come up with that. You know, we could work with your professionals to come up with what, what number that is.
Yeah, that works, okay.
May I ask a question? Being smart lights, I hate things what they're smarter than me, but your other comment was that it's seasonal, so in the summertime, they might be dimmed at a different time than during the winter, one assumes, right? So, so I don't know that setting a particular time is a good idea, because there is a safety issue back there. I, I just, I'm just asking, I mean, I'm commenting, but I'm really asking the question. Should there be some variability seasonally?
Yeah, I feel they will be dimmed to reasonable levels at, to provide security to the site and safety, but not overwhelming light.
You know, what, what's the current practice on the lights that are? You know, what's the current practice in the lights that are in the other part of the pavement?
Wait, on our lighting plan, we have the...
I'm advised that nine o'clock is a safe kind of metric if you're looking for something objective.
Right, so then the other question was, and I think it's up for discussion, is what percentage are you dimming, 50%?
Security.
For security and, you know, safety purposes?
We certainly understand the question and the goal, I think, behind it, and towards that end, if the board's comfortable, we can work with your professionals to achieve the goal of dimming to the greatest degree possible while having a reasonable level of light for safety back there.
Okay, thank you. Quick question, perhaps I should have asked Mr. Hanson, is the picture there is, the picture itself shows it as it was a while ago before they knew the new construction. It also was a time when there was a lot more grass on the east side. I assume, I wasn't aware of this, but I assume that that portion has been leveled, built up and leveled and added gravel, expanded under the 2014 resolution. Is that correct?
The subject area that we're talking about, yeah, was part of the 2014...
Okay, so that, so the additional area, which is inside the current unpaved portion, at one point was sloped, and that was filled in and backed up under that 2014 application. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No, Mr. Quillen?
Do you think it's sufficient to have only one storm inlet in the corner where you indicated? Seems like a pretty big parking lot for only one drain.
Yeah, the, there's one existing one now, but with the inlet in the corner, it'll all drain to it, and the pipe is sized adequately to convey the stormwater from the corner into the stormwater basin, so it should handle it with no issues.
As long as it doesn't clog up.
Correct, yes, as it will be maintained.
The environmental report says that Mr. Hanson indicates that it achieves a reduction to less or equal density conditions.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, bringing Mr. Hanson back, I guess, thank you.
Okay, so we'll talk about the planning testimony, but first just talk about the two design waivers. We already made it very clear that we'll work with the board on the planning, so that's all we can do. As far as striping the parking lot, just a couple words on that. You know, for a parking lot that is going to be used by customers and patrons of the facility, it certainly would be necessary to stripe it in that case. This is not the case. This is a parking lot, a vehicle storage area, one you'd want to let the employees position the cars depending upon what size they are and when they come in as to what's most appropriate and most efficient. So that's why we're asking for the waiver for striping. So the variance really is pretty straightforward. We're asking for impervious coverage variance. It's a C-type variance, and so the board has heard many times, the types of C variance is you have what they call either a C1 variance, which is a hardship type case, or you have a C2 case, which is called a flexible C. So if this doesn't fit into a hardship case, this fits into a C2 case. And for a C2 case, there's positive and negative criteria in many variance cases. And then the positive criteria basically show, and the board needs to find, that at least one purpose of the municipal land use law, 40,0155B2, is advanced if the project's approved. And the negative criteria, it's a three-point criteria. So we're supposed to show, we're supposed to find that there's no substantial detriment to the zone plan, the zoning ordinance, or the public good. There can be a minor detriment, but it has to show it's not rising to a substantial detriment. So I think this one is pretty straightforward, and based on all of the testimony that we had tonight, and the condition of the parking area, by putting in these improvements, which do require an increase in impervious coverage, we're going to really add to the safety of this, which is purpose A of municipal land use law. And it's generally held to be the purpose that's the strongest of the purpose C, if it provides special reasons in other cases. So here with the extra lighting, with the improved drainage, with the curbing, and all of that that goes with it, including the pedestrian walkway, that's going to make that physical connection between the showroom and the service. All these things, in my opinion, really do make this a safer site, so I think the positive criteria is met. And if we look to the negative criterion, the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, you know, these are just minor detriments to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. I don't believe that it will rise to a substantial impact. When you look at the public good, you know, if you look at things like visual impact from the roads, you look at drainage impacts to the neighbors, number one, visual impact, you know, this is held behind the different businesses, it's surrounded by commercial businesses, so there really is in public that's going to see this. And when you look at drainage, as I testified to, and James testified to, we're installing an underground infiltration system. We've been continually addressing drainage as the years have gone on here, and this is really a very suitable plan, in my opinion, and there'll be no impact to the neighborhood property. And then lastly, from a lighting standpoint, the lighting is consistent, it's been designed to be dark sky compliant, there's no residential properties that are going to look at this, so I think there's no impacts. And we would consent also, which is a normal thing, that if there becomes after construction one of the lights that needs adjustment or needs a shield, we usually work with Mr. Hanson's group on that, and whoever has the right individual, and we would shield that and address that. So with all those things, I think this is a very straightforward case. I find that these positive and negative criteria, I hope you do too. I think if the project's approved, you feel comfortable that it does, and it's really a very appropriate decision.
Does these, the slight increase in impervious coverage compared to what's there now, is that primarily due to the sidewalk?
It's not just the sidewalk. I mean, what's happened with the gravel area, and this is another benefit, I think, of the application, is that, you know, the gravel, that tends to migrate over time. You know, you're plowing, you do the best you can to kind of reel it back in, but it just, it moves around. So, you know, it's a combination of what was there, and then things move over time. So now, if we're approved with the variance, we'll have curbing, we'll have everything, it'll be locked in, and it'll be set, so. No pun intended.
Any questions?
One question, sorry.
Oh, yes, yes, please.
I couldn't really see, but with, if you are to add the grass that the board was requesting, would that actually decrease the degree of impervious coverage, the percentage of impervious coverage?
It wouldn't because the areas that we're planning on vegetating and included in our impervious calculation group could be vegetated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're not...
Okay.
But again, if we put a couple of extra shrubs or trees in there, I think we could practically, it'll be a small decrease in the runoff because you have a little bit more of a vegetated area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If the board members have any questions, I did also have one that I posed, it might have been Mr. Kaiser, but the lighting was consistent with what previously existed. Do we know how many additional poles and fixtures are being added, and also what the heights are?
Yes, so the existing heights are 22.5 feet from the luminaire to the finished grade, so we're matching that. And so what we're proposing, which is shown on A1, is two standalone lights with double fixtures, double-lumineaires, in generally the center of the project area, and then we'll have one, two, three individual single luminaires around the periphery of it. And so we think that gives a really nice coverage of light.
So, I'm sorry, five additional poles?
It'd be five additional poles.
I got to add the 22.5.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess we still have no one from the public to question this witness or comment, so.
I timed my closing this afternoon, it's no longer than 25 minutes, so...
That's at least, according to Mr. Alessio, that's at least five minutes too long.
No, we appreciate your time in consideration of the application. We consider it to be improvement to the site in all the ways that have been testified to, and respectfully request your approval.
Chairman?
Yes.
May I make a motion that we grant approval with the variances being sought and the one design waiver being sought having...
Two design waivers.
Two design waivers.
I thought there was one.
No, it's two.
The striping and...
The landscaping.
And the landscaping.
The landscaping, I guess, maybe is not as significant a deviation as it previously was, and some may be added, but still technically, and I take it that's with all the stipulated two conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, which I've got. And they'll be in the resolution. Post-construction slash operation shielding of fixtures if deemed necessary by our engineer at 9:00 PM or thereabouts, dimmed lighting at a certain percentage that to be determined by our engineer, and a couple of areas of vegetation, hardy shrubs, maybe ornamentals, deep-rooted grasses, subject to review and approval of our board planner and our engineer, I think, since we've had so many suggestions. That's what I have, is the three stipulations, and the impervious coverage variance, and the two waivers on landscaping for the, no landscaping for the parking lot, or very little, and no marking on the parking stalls.
So that was, that was the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead. I think we did it at the exact same time, Tonya.
Sonia guesses aside, she's writing it down. Any discussion? Anything? Okay, Sonia, I guess you can call the roll.
Mr. Alessio?
Yes.
It's been ordered.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes, and good luck.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Riglia?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks.
So close.
Root for the over. Very good, you guys. I'll root for our over then, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. What happened to Mr. Warner? Oh, there he is, he just turned around. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the recent resolution by the Township Committee dealing with the affordable housing block off of Catch Road. Mr. Warner, you want to...
Very quickly, I promise.
Yeah.
But I think as everyone's aware, and if you're not, I'll make you aware, but the, a couple of things semi-related, and it's just a plug that... The other evening, the governing body, we did resolve our affordable housing obligation number for the fourth round. Our prospective need number was settled at a 375 affordable unit obligation, which the DCA had previously calculated our obligation at 571 units, if I recall correctly, and Fair Share Housing Center had set it at about 360, I'm losing the number, 300 and, I'm sorry, 562. So it was roughly 200 units below what it was set at, and that was by a resolution through the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. Appreciation to program chair and Judge Miller, and special adjudicator Kendra Lilly, and also special appreciation to the mayor of the governing body, Liz Laney, Paul Phillips, Aaron Wilson, Tim Quinn, Armwood and Armwood, and I played a small role in the process as well.
Hardly a small role.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's going on the record.
The, and so that's related, at least, to the fact that in our ongoing meeting our obligations, again, fair share, not our unfair share, but our fair share, the, as the board will recall, we have a Catch Road project, a 150-unit, 100% affordable multifamily development project that has been slated for Catch Road near the county, well, it's actually on county, owned property currently, at least, owned by the county. That was part of our settlement agreement that went back to the Red Bulls Arena, a litigation that we had with Fair Share Housing Center, and we were able, as that settlement agreement back in 2017, I think it was, 2018, the township and the Red Bulls were permitted to proceed unhindered with the construction of the athletic training facility at 101103 Columbia Road in return for the resolution of that litigation, which provided for this 50-unit, 100% affordable housing project on Catch Road. There were a number of resolutions adopted by the governing body the other evening in conjunction with same, one of which provides for and authorizes and directs our board to conduct an area in need of redevelopment study for that site, not, excuse me, non-condemnation redevelopment area to make that determination whether or not that portion of, two lots, actually, constitutes an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation. So that, that resolution 100-25 directs the board, more specifically, Mr. Phillips, Liz Laney and their firm, to do that area in need of redevelopment study. The board, some of the board members will recall the process very quickly. Once that study is done, we will conduct a full public hearing on notice, as required by the local redevelopment and housing law. I recall correctly, two notices, 10 days apart, the second at least seven days prior to the evening of the hearing, so generally 17 days and seven days, I'm sorry, one week apart, 10 days prior, 17 days and 10 days prior to that hearing. It'll be a full public hearing, and if the board then determines that indeed it meets one or more of the criteria the site does for designating it in area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation, then presumably the board will make such a recommendation to the governing body, and the governing body will consider that recommendation and act accordingly. And if indeed it is designated as such, it does also provide for the board and Liz Laney and Mr. Phillips' firm to then prepare a redevelopment plan, all again in conjunction with that project, which is affordable housing and part of the settlement agreement back. I sometimes refer to it as round 3.5, sort of in between the third round and the fourth round, that particular matter. So hopefully that gives everybody a good understanding. Any questions, I'm here.
I didn't catch the actual numbers, could you repeat those?
I'm sorry, the...
The numbers, where we started and where we...
Oh, our...
You were speaking to us.
Sure, I'm sorry, I was trying to be too quick. The Department of Community Affairs, that was obligated to come up with the original non-binding, thankfully, calculations of our fourth round prospective need, came up with a number of 571. We then argued in our binding, on us at least, resolution for a 308 number, and we had methods and arguments for that determination. It wasn't just selected out of whole clock. And then Fair Share objected to our 308 with a, and said that the appropriate obligation for the fourth round would be 562 units, only nine units below the 571 that the DCA established. And then as a result of a negotiation process, we were able to convince Fair Share, as well as the builders, that indeed the right number, at least for negotiation and determination purposes, was 375 units, obviously much closer to 308 than 571, almost 200 units lower, and I would respectfully submit, but I don't get an opinion, but it doesn't stop me from rendering them. They didn't even slow me down sometimes. But that, you know, I think that would be more appropriate and closer to what would be our fair share obligation, and then certainly the 571 year obligation.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I make a motion that we approve the resolution to have the planner conduct an ANWR on this property?
It's not quite on the agenda for adoption of a resolution, although, you know what, there's nothing wrong with the motion second and voice vote to accept the governing body's authorization and to, and to pass it along, if you will, to the Phillips Price for the area in need of redevelopment studies, so motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Do you have that motion again? Second?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
How much carries over from the prior round?
I'm sorry, one more time?
I'm sorry, my voice is gone, how much carries forward from the prior round that we still need to?
Nine?
Well, we have the, separate apart from our round 3.5 obligation, the 50-unit, 100% affordable, we are fully compliant with our third round obligation, and I believe there may be a couple of dozen or so units that have not yet come to fruition, that does not impact on the, does not change the fact, I should say, at all, doesn't it, that we remain fully compliant with our third round obligation and our round 3.5 obligation, I would say as well.
Okay, so fully compliant round three, and now 3.5 slash four, we're adding 375?
Well, yeah, we're fully compliant with our 3.5 round, as I call it, the Catch Road obligation, because we're moving forward with that diligently, and now our fourth round obligation, technically, the fourth round does not start until July 1, but we have now come to an agreement, and it's now been recorded in our declaratory judgment action, as all towns just about were required to do, that what our fourth round number is, our prospective need number, is the, I almost missed it, 375 units, I believe, next step is the adoption of a housing element fair share plan to be done by the statutory deadline in the federal fair, excuse me, the State Fair Housing Act, which is, the deadline is June 30, so certainly we'll be, now that the numbers are done, we'll be seeing a plan, no doubt, from the Phillips Price Firm, along with an area in need of redevelopment study in the next month or two, I would imagine.
Correct.
So, so that's the?
We'll be busy.
So that's the plan for how we're going to meet the 375?
Exactly, how we're going to satisfy that obligation.
And that's by the end of June, and then it's later in the year than the appropriate, I don't know, when is the deadline for actually passing change, you know, zoning ordinances, whatever, that might be part of that plan.
Yeah, the, and in fact, what we have to do by June 30, per the statute, is not only have adopted our housing element fair share plan, which is subject to subsequent challenge, certainly not inviting any, but it's potential, but we have to adopt that, and we have to have draft implementation ordinances by the ready, if you will, to be ultimately adopted by the governing body, and then the ultimate adoption, I believe, is March of 2026, still, I think?
We should be all done by then.
Yeah. Well, at the draft, the ordinances. The board professionals are going to have, no, the, but suffice to say, particularly there's no challenge to the housing element fair share plan, I, one would expect we could adopt those, or the governing body can adopt those implementation ordinances relatively soon after June 30.
What would be the challenge, they can't challenge the number, they could challenge whether the plans are appropriate to meet that number, is that would be the nature of any?
Not inviting any, or giving anybody any ideas, certainly, but the, but, no, certainly someone can say that, you know, they wish to have a site over here as opposed to here, or what have you, or maybe someone would challenge how we calculate the bonus credits that were afforded, or what have you, I mean, there's certain, a lot of things, I guess, that are conceivable, but more than likely, if it's a, if it's a valid plan, and Fair Share, you know, is not, you know, recognizes as such, and absent maybe a developer, you know, just disgruntled that they weren't in the plan, perhaps, you know, that would probably be all that there would be.
And people have until August 31st? Most likely, the ordinance says we would probably wait.
Wait, sure, sure. Yeah, and that's why I think they set it up to have it as in a draft form by June 30, so that people didn't adopt it and then have to go make changes, but, yeah, so that would, and then challengers now have two months where they only had one month to challenge the numbers, and we and the judiciary had only one month to resolve all those disputes, but as is public knowledge now, we statewide didn't get the job done in one month, so those, in some towns, those disputes are continuing, and the program was afforded an opportunity to continue its work to try to resolve those disputes, we finished in the month of March, and I think in a, in a positive way.
Is there any, you may or may not know, is there any, thank you, report from that lawsuit that's going on against this?
Oh, statewide, I went to the Aptiv, they lost at the Aptiv, they petitioned for cert, I think, you know, I've lost track, frankly, the fact that I haven't heard anything, now that you've mentioned it, I've been busy for the last month, but one would think, one would, yeah, I haven't heard.
They have quite a number of municipalities signed on to that lawsuit.
Well, there are about three dozen ballpark, it didn't work at the trial and appellate level. So, and again, I would submit that our efforts were very effective, and hopefully the quash reasonable, worth it.
Again, I just want to comment, Mr. Warner, you're being very humble here, and just want this board to know as well, that the work of Liz and Paul and Steve and Tim Quinn was involved, and Aaron, our tax assessor, honestly was like the best in the state, they did an incredible job, and they did the endless amount of time you've already put in, what you're going to continue to put in, I'm just, I'm saying, we, the township committee, are incredibly proud of the work they did to get us to the number we're at, and feel really confident as we go forward, that we're in really good hands, so thank you.
Thank you.
And kind of piggybacking what the mayor just said, I know Steve mentioned this, you know, when he first entered the room, but no other town, you know, the municipality in the state got the conjurp reduction that our negotiating team fought for, and fought really hard for, so, you know, kudos to Morris Township for, you know, coming just about 200 units under, where no other municipality can close, you know, maybe they got a handful, so kudos to you all.
Thank you both.
Good news.
So, Mr. Chair, I just want to give a clarification, so we've been talking about the fourth round obligation of 375, and that's what the Phillips Firm is going to look into and I guess publish a set of recommendations by the end of?
For the next 10 years.
For the next 10 years, but back to, and maybe I missed it, and I apologize if I did, back to the Catch Road project, the 50 units, the 3.5 obligation, what are we to do, it sounds like that's separate from what the Phillips Firm is doing, is the board tasked with doing something, and if so, what is the timing and what are we to be doing?
Sure, we're, yeah, that, it is separate, as I say, round 3.5, it was a separate settlement for a separate discrete issue and site. That, the settlement agreement there requires the 50 units 100% affordable to go on that site, or if necessary, some other site, but that site is moving forward, and our sole role is that once we, once Liz and Paul's firm put together an area in need of redevelopment study, and recommend to you either to designate that area a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment or not, because they find that it meets one or more of the statutory criteria for such a designation or not, that, we will have a hearing on that recommendation, full public hearing, extra notice, if you will, for the local redevelopment and housing law, that's probably a couple of months or so away, I'm guessing, and then you will make a recommendation, a finding and recommendation to the governing body, and the governing body makes the ultimate call, if you will, as to whether the site gets designated an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation, or not.
So good.
And that's all related to Catch Road project.
I got it, so the Phillips Firm is taking a lead, we will get the results of what they do, and then we'll take it from there.
And they will testify and render those opinions at that hearing, so you'll not only get it in writing, but you'll also get it verbally.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, moving on, is there anything, nothing from the legislative committee, other than what we've just been talking about?
No, just.
Okay, we have no, again, there doesn't seem to be public here, so don't have any need for public comment, and I don't think we need a closed session at this time, so, Mr. Alessio?
Quick question.
Yes.
Are we meeting on the 21st?
No.
Oh.
The whole day we're canceling?
This year's only going to have 364 days.
Yes, right.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion to be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.